You ready, Steve? All right. Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the July 15th Special Planning Commission meeting. And first on the agenda, we have a public hearing. And while we get in, before we get in and out, Jerry, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Chairman Gears?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Moore.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Underneath the public hearing, normally, or how we rep, how we do it, we have those requesting a change to come forward with an explanation, their request, and then we have the public, we invite the public to voice their opinion for or against a change. So with that being said, first item we have on the agenda for the public hearing, we have Jay Wallace representing Ray Hamilton, owners of the property known as 4817 Section Avenue, Norwood, Ohio, 45212, located in an office zoning district with the planned unit development. Code slash PUD overlay is submitting both the preliminary and a final plan to be considered. So with that being said, is there anyone from Ray Hamilton that wants to show the presentation of what they're proposing?
Sure. I need a little bit of history about the company.
We're basically more, what for the public hearing is basically what's being proposed on the site.
Is that on there? Hello? I am Dennis Loftus. I'm actually the Vice President of Ray Hamilton Company. About seven or so years ago, yes, Jay Wallace, Jim Nordlow had purchased 4.5 acres. We are looking to move our corporate headquarters over there. We're currently over on Highland Avenue. We offer, we do, we have about 18 over the road, 53-foot trucks, and probably eight to 10 straight trucks. And we are, we have submitted the architectural drawings and engineering plans and whatnot for you to review in order to approve for new construction.
Okay.
We, I think you have the information here. We currently have about 48 employees. We've grown. When Jay purchased Ray Hamilton six years ago, it was doing probably less than $1 million a year. We should do probably around $6 million this year. And we have, you know, pretty much grown by about 25 percent, 25 to 30 percent each year. So we are anticipating that we will grow from, you know, 48 employees currently to 85 employees probably within the next year or two. So we have been growing pretty rapidly with the economy. We pretty much are over the road services the retail industry heavily. A lot of, we move a lot of fixtures and things like that. Trucks are mostly on the road, come back into the weekends, we're servicing things of that nature. Our straight trucks also are pretty much out around the city doing moves, which we've been doing in the greater Cincinnati area for 120-some years. So...
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, John?
Are you going to be doing the maintenance on the trucks on-site, or is that off-site?
They do, we do Penske leases, so all of our things are serviced by Penske, like all of our trucks. The trailers, we do some, as far as repairs and things of that nature. We do those, some of those on-site, major ones. We usually will have done it at a shop.
Okay. I didn't notice in here. Is there going to be a fueling station on that?
No, no, no. We get all of our fuel, we get TA on the roads.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll reserve until the...
Until we get in, yeah. Okay.
Well, Joe?
Yes, sir.
If I, if I could, we've got on the plan, show that there, you'll be cutting back on the south side of this, you'll be cutting back the tree line, basically to the fence line, and putting in some new, it looks like new trees on at least one of the, one of the drawings that's in there. And I'm curious what the fencing and what that landscaping is going to look like on the south end.
That would be for the engineer.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm Kevin Claracy with Claracy Frank Architecture. On the south side, it's really, the trees are there to provide a screen to the residential side. Other than that, we haven't really called out any additional landscaping on the south side. I think we have a plan that shows a landscaping plan for the east side, a little bit on that north side corner there, to try to make that, you know, present a pull and attractive. But, yeah, the trees were really all a chin on the south side.
Right. And those trees, the trees are designed to be big, full, bushy, probably evergreen?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they're pines. They're white. So they'll grow fairly quickly. And they will fill out and provide a good, you know, overall screen across that side.
Okay. And if I can keep going, Mr. Chairman, I was just, I don't, I didn't notice it, if I was looking at it, about the lighting plan for the lot, for the building, lights and signage and what you have planned for in there?
Lighting, I think there, the intent there, the owners, Jay wanted to have wall pack lights on, they really just need them on the, on the north side of the building, and fairly minimal lighting. It's not like they, they do operations out there that they need a whole lot of lighting for.
Yeah, we're usually, there's not business at night. We're usually just pulling in and unloading stuff in the warehouse, so there's not much activity that would require a bunch of bright lighting that would interrupt the environment or anything of that nature.
Right. And that's, that's really what I was getting at. And I'm assuming that whatever signage you would put up would be within the code that we have.
It would. It's in a PUD, so they would be allowed to have two-for-one, two foot for, two square foot for every one, one foot of building frontage. So, but they would have to meet the code. They could not go over.
And we did have some, some building signage on our building elevations.
Yeah, I think it's under Keith. I think it's on...
I don't think I have an elevation.
No. I didn't see an elevation.
Right. And that was really my next big follow-up question, is I don't have an elevation. This is basically a footprint.
Right. I agree. That was one of my comments on the... I mean, just to comment what, you know, follow-up of what you were saying, my understanding, a set of plans went to the Development Committee last year, and even went to council and was approved, but without the elevation plans, the front office area was going to be a bump out compared to, so it didn't look like a big square box. But without seeing the elevation plans, you can't really tell what these plans are saying.
Right, right. And we did get, yeah, we got renderings and elevation plan, and that was a part of what came through.
A year ago, a year and a half ago.
It was longer ago than that, but, yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, best, from what I can see, I don't, I don't necessarily know if these are the same plans that were approved.
It's different.
Yes. All right. In my own mind, I question why we're back with different plans from the other plans that were approved.
Well, that would be, and I just assumed that you had touched on that, it was, that had been touched on before I got here.
No, no. We just started.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's...
Yeah, the previous building was a larger footprint, and I don't recall the square footage of that building. Larger footprint, and it did have the office portion as being kind of a separate structure with a lower roof line to it. That building was over budget for the owner, so in effort to economize, the footprint was reduced, and the office portion has worked into the entire volume of the building. It's not a separate roof line.
Yeah. So, but I think that was part of the stipulation the last time it went through, both through council and through economic development and that. But just for some of the history, I think it's, how do you want to say? You asked about the landscaping on the south side. I only lived three blocks from there, and the lot for the past four or five years, in plain words, looked like a dump site, still to today. Well, and I, you go, huh, but you're not living with it. And I know the Building Department almost had to threaten to cite everybody to court to get the grass cut. Supposedly, it was cut about two weeks ago, and they cut half the lot. So...
So you're saying currently that we need work on the concrete of the property?
Currently?
You're saying currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Just a week ago, they cut half the lot and let the back part by Franklin Avenue, and the grass, or whatever you want to call it, the weeds were cut down about maybe to a foot compared to where they were four foot.
Okay. I could talk to the owner about that and make sure we get that taken care of.
I was going to hold off. I might as well unload now. Might as well do it now. Yeah.
Do I need more paper, Mr. Mayor?
You probably will. I got some questions in general for here, and then I'll have questions for you. Okay, so these plans were changed, these plans were submitted when, Mr. Stoker? The previous plans?
The ones you have in front of you now?
No, no, the previous plans. Was that a year ago?
Those were over a year ago.
Okay, over a year ago. So that means that property is sat vacant over a year. And did we or did we not get grant money to get that environmental issues addressed on that property?
We did.
We did. So now, we've got, we got funds to clean up that property. That property was purchased, I won't say the amount because I'm not 100% sure. Then I understand the property was tried, they tried to market the property for a very large profit. And then, it stands vacant, we can't get people to cut the grass, it's a large parcel of property, and it becomes a battle from now, for the past months. Now we come back and we say, we're not only, we're going to scale back on this project over budget, like I think you said, which is pretty accurate, which means you got the parcel of property for a very cheap price. The grant money was paid to clean it up, which raised the market value of that property, I would assume. Would that be correct, Mr. Realtor?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So now the value of that property went up. That was based on actions that this city took. And then it sits vacant, and then we come back with plans that are scaled back. You said, because it's over budget. So my thought is, is that this thing was sold, I guess recently, when, when did you buy this company?
Ray Hamilton or the property?
The company.
Ray, Jay Wallace bought the company, I would say, six years ago or so.
And it is set. I mean, you have done, this thing has done nothing. So the first thing we hear is, well, we're coming to you with a new plan, and we're going to scale it back after everything that's been done. We've sat and looked at that for months, running battle just to get the grass cut. Tell me why this planning commission or why the city should trust or say, okay, listen, we're willing to work with you. We are business friendly, but we are also business-wise. And to be quite candid with you, you may be right to do all this. I don't have a good feeling about this. I see no, I have no trust in this situation whatsoever. Don't misunderstand me. Due to the history of this, this process and down there, I don't have a reason to trust anything that's being said, other than we're going to scale it back and try to get by cheaper. We're going to scale back on the office space, we're going to scale back on the building, we're going to scale back on the appearance of the building, and basically, it's going to be a storage warehouse with a small office. And, and built low budget as is. So, you're telling me that you're bringing in $6 million?
The property, I apologize, yeah, and I'm just stepping into this, as I said, because Jay is out of town. But the property was bought initially, Jay Wallace and a couple other parties, Jim Nordlow and another party, as, as an initial investment. Because it was a brownfield, they bought it, it was a good price, and they took a chance that the property, you know, would actually be clean. What has happened or transpired since then is Jay Wallace, who was, this is totally separate, is 100% owner of Ray Hamilton. And he has decided, and again, we had, we're debating, what is the best thing? It wasn't originally bought for the purpose of being the home of Ray Hamilton. It was bought as an investment through Jim Nordlow, Jay Wallace, and another party. Now, we, as we have grown at Ray Hamilton, as I said, in the last five years significantly, have found that it's a very, you know, sustainable business. We have decided to invest in opening, you know, putting a building. We were looking at whether our best options were to lease, you know, looking at based on what we needed, or to purchase and build. And he has made a cognizant decision to invest the money in a long-term investment, going with a permanent structure as opposed to lease. And he will, through this transaction, purchase the property from the other two parties for the purpose of Ray Hamilton.
But, see, that's what they say. If these investors bought this property, they basically flip it. And we think, well, it's a brownfield, we can get this thing for a good buy. Sure, it's a good buy. If somebody comes along and furnishes the funds to clean it up for you, which we did, believing that something nice was going to come. The bill was paid, the property was cleaned up. Now we don't know whether we're going to flip it or not, so we sit on it. And my information is, and that, if you don't know all the answers, maybe we should wait until the guy with all the answer gets back in town.
That's a good idea.
And, and the other thing is, if, if that's the case, they tried, they paid so much for it, and I'm sure, I've heard a number, and I'm sure, if I ask you, I'm sure he'll tell me, I would hope. And then they tried to market it for a very, very large profit margin. And our thought, when we first heard it, was, wait a minute, they bought that property for so much, we had it cleaned up, now they're going to turn around and make a profit on it. And my thought was, being, you know, talking to the Law Department, I wanted to sue somebody because we got the money to do that, taxpayer money, and then somebody's going to take that money, clean it up, and then flip it and make a profit on our dime and our, you know, our effort into the plan. So, and now we come back, and now we want to do this, and now we want to scale it back. Now, after all this effort, we want to put something in less than what we had intended to put in a year ago, which it does not make any sense. And right now, personally, now that I can have an opinion, I don't have a good feeling about this.
That's...
And if you was to ask me right now, what I think about it, I wouldn't vote for anything for it.
Uh-huh.
So I just want to let you know, if I decide to oppose this and vote against it, exactly why, and why somebody didn't reach out to this city a long time ago and lay their cards on the table.
Yeah. I would, I would say that we definitely need to reschedule, and I can talk to Jay about it, and he can discuss with you, as I said, what has transpired with the whole project and why it was reduced. There was a couple, I thought the reason was that we were going to start with 40,000 square feet, and then based on that, depend, or build out the addition once we had the need for the additional square footage, so that wasn't going to be all...
But the additions in the rear, I mean, I think the biggest thing that was scaled back or cut out was the offices, so it doesn't look like a big square box, and that's what it ends up. And if, between Keith and myself, we wouldn't have brought it up and asked, nowhere in any of this, does there any communication that was a revised plans?
Okay.
Because I do know there was two or three sets of plans that were sent in to the Building Department, and one of the original ones recently, after everything was approved, maybe about two, three months ago, showed parking in the front, and that was one of the things that isn't allowed. But I mean, and the reason the office was bumped out is because it does border all residential area. And, like I say, the site's been unsightly for the past six or seven years, as long as they owned it, and even had insult when they decided not to sell the property, and I guess we're going to build there. They left the for sale signs up there. And finally, the Building Department had orders, orders to take the signs down, to remove them, and is, as up and up as they are, they went out there with the saw and sawed them off so that they could fall down, and still the poster's sitting there. So, again, as the mayor said, they, there is, what do you want to say? Nothing they've done's been outstanding so, so far. Can I? First of all, I'd like to say, if I said anything, in all fairness, if I said anything that's incorrect or inaccurate, and if I have, correct me now.
I think you're pretty accurate, Mr. Mayor. We did have it in a, a grant to do a environmental assessment of that property, and we did spend state dollars to do that.
And the, and just for, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we even applied for the grant to do the cleanup from day one is they were going to build there, there wasn't any, well, we're going to buy it, have the city clean it up, we're going to flip it.
That's exactly correct.
It was originally from day one, is they were going to build there.
You're exactly correct.
But you didn't say that.
I've, I've been with the company for two years.
I understand. We're not here, we're not here trying to rake you over the coals, but we're giving you the history.
Yes.
Because apparently, you haven't been told everything. You know? But that was the original, because we do not apply for grants and use taxpayers' money for a real estate investment person to say, well, here, we're going to buy it as an investment, you guys clean it up, and then we're going to flip it. We don't do that. Never have and never will.
Right.
One final point. The one time we drove by down there, they had two guys with a little mower on there, little mower, with the grass up three or four feet, a little mower. Them guys are down there cutting that grass, and I thought, you cheap son of guns, clean that up a little bit.
That's been three years ago.
Yeah. And they showed guys down there with a little mower down there, cleaning it up, and I thought, you, you, you guys, cheap skates, I swear. I was so mad to let that go. And let me, let me clear up another issue. For future reference, when you go talk to whoever this is that's out of town, the owner, make sure that they understand, we are business friendly, but we are also business savvy. We will work with people. We've, we've been around a long time, we've dealt with a lot of businesses, and we know how it's done, we know how it operates, and we know when something, because the way we operate is, Joe and myself, we consult with Jerry, we consult with the Law Department, we consult with other developers, and we generally come out pretty good. This one here, and we will voice our displeasure when it's noted. So if your boss or whoever this is decides he wants to proceed with this, tell him to be prepared and, and come, and we've given you, we've given you, here's the test, we're giving you all the questions, so they can do their homework and come with all the proper answers, because we'll have some answers too.
Yes.
And I would strongly suggest that whatever answers you come with be accurate.
Yeah. I mean, Jay, Jay, you know, we're both Cincinnati natives, Jay Wallace has put everything into this business. He works seven days a week, 15-hour days. He is committed to the success of this business, and he has signed his, you know, his name on, you know, on a large loan personally, and backing it himself in order to, you know, make this go through. I mean, it's, 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 it's an investment of his that he plans on doing and doing right. So I would say that, you know, because, you know, the, the way that, that was his vision, they've had plans for the building ever since I've been with the company. The plans have changed, you would have to speak to the reasons as to why the plans have changed, but he has wanted to build the building, and it was just a matter of how he could bring it to fruition. So, you know, and that was, you know, that the loan, the banks may not have said, this is a little too much, $4 million, where it started out at. It wasn't because he wanted to do less, it was because of the constriction of the bank. So... If I could make one point about the cost issue, what they ran into was the demolition on that building that had been there was not done as it should have been. There were a lot of rubble, masonry, concrete, just plowed into the site, covered over with a little dirt, and the site's just a real mess. So, things have to be, you know, found a best here and...
Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that why you got that property for the price that you did? Did you get, I mean, that's what I'm saying, be prepared, because that, that property was bought at a very, very reasonable price, because I looked at your, and said, gosh, that's not being, there, you know, you said there was rocks and dirt under it, that very well may have been. That, that building could have been raised improperly, but that's why they got it for a decent price.
Well, I know that the price, just to reinforce and to clean that up, was going to be like $600,000. So, and that is why they looked at doing the restructure, because that alone was going to be an immense amount of cost. So, like you said, I, I am 100% confident that Jay will have satisfactory answers for you. I apologize that had he known that this was going to be how, you know, the situation was going to be, he would have definitely made plans to be here. He very, takes very, very little vacation, he is out with his family, and I, I promise you that he will be, you know, totally prepared for the next meeting and have, you know, answers that I believe will satisfy. He's put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this, and he wants this to be a successful business that he can pass on to his children.
I would just say, on behalf of the Planning Commission, if he knew he wasn't going to be here, he is the one, or the company's the one who asked us to have a special meeting.
Yeah.
So, and it was important we meet. So, I mean, we set it up at their request, not at our request. So, at the very least, he could have called and said, or had you, somebody notified the Building Department, I'm not going to make it. Let's reschedule.
Reschedule. Yeah, I think he has...
So, I mean, in some cases, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I don't buy it all.
Okay.
Okay. While we're still in our public hearing, do we just want to continue our public hearing?
I would continue it to the next...
To our next meeting. Do you have any other questions? Comments?
I just had a couple of comments, is that moving forward on this, and this is, this was a large part of the discussion we had, and I think it must have been Economic Development Committee on Council where I saw this, where we went through in the last set of plans, is that a lot of our discussion was about the lighting plan and the landscaping and the fence lines and the building appearance and the elevation. And so, those are materials, at the very least, that are absolutely going to be required before it goes any further, because this is, you know, because this is, well, first of all, it's a, it's a spot that, once it's gone, it's gone, and we don't get a chance to redo it. Once it's, something's in there, it's in there. It's also right, it's a place where, that has some potential because it's right on the lateral, but it's also a place that is directly a budding residential property. And so, it's got to be the right kind of fit, it's got to be well-managed as far as from a design perspective, so it's not more of a detriment than an asset to the city. And then I'd also be interested in seeing, because if it's the office space that was, that was reduced, then it's a question of, well, what does that mean in regards to the, the staffing that would be in that office space? So, I mean, I don't mind the fact that, oh, the warehouse is smaller, that doesn't bother me at all, because, you know, extra warehouse space doesn't give me any, doesn't give the city any, or it doesn't really make a difference for the city, nor does office employees, however, that, that is a big consideration. So those are the things to keep in mind as this, as this goes forward.
I can call a conference him in. I mean, I don't know... That's all right. Yeah, okay. I suggest, number one, you, you open a line of communications with this Building Commission and keep him informed, have the owner keep him informed, and also do your background and make sure that you check with other people how this city operates with businesses. So you don't walk away, and the owner doesn't walk away thinking we're anti-business, we're not. But we are, we scrutinize these businesses, and we support them, but that doesn't mean everybody gets carte blanche. Because I think, because Keith hit it right on the head, we don't, we have three square miles of parcel of property, once it's gone, it's gone. parcel of property, once it's gone, it's gone.
Right.
It's gone for 25 years. So, we take those parcels of property, and we treat them, we're very protective of what goes in.
Yeah, and I would just say, that's why we have PUDs, so people can come in, basically, and buy prime property and just put up a self-storage unit. That's why it is. John, you have it?
I just want, we need to just have a motion to...
Yes, continue, continue the public hearing.
To continue the public hearing to a time on the circuit.
Okay. For a second on that? A second, okay. Any discussion? Jerry, will you call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. That will put our public hearing and continue to a further date, and we'll go into our regular meeting. We do have a couple items on the agenda. First of all, you want to do the roll call for our regular meeting, please.
Chairman Gears?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you, Jerry. The, one item we have on the agenda is the approval of our May 6th, 2015 regular meeting minutes. As if there's no additions, corrections, or additions, do, I hear a motion to approve them as of right.
So moved.
For a second?
Fitted.
All right. Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
I abstain, I wasn't with the committee.
Jim Gears?
Yes. All right, we have no old business, new business, basically, we'll remove the new business because we continue to public hearing on that. We don't have any communications or any miscellaneous. Keith is here, so we don't have to excuse the absent member for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr., Mr. Gears?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm.
Stand...
And we go through you to set up the meeting?
Yes, sir. Thanks a lot. Sure.
Thanks again. I am confident that we are satisfied, and that's all we need. Thank you very much.